Get rid of that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Shifrin and I'm chairman of the planning board and I call this meeting of January twenty-second, twenty-four to order at six thirty-one P. M. We do have a quorum present. I'll have a roll call. Carol Hopps is present.
Robert Theryan present.
And Shepherd present.
And Laura Shifrin present. I don't see Tony. Okay. Let to all, um, let's just lead you to please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Want to thank all of our veterans as well as our military serving now and all of our EMTs, emergency first responders. That we were nothing. Meeting is being recorded and will be available on YouTube, on the YouTube channel. One point four chairman's additions or deletions. I have none. And then, since we have a few minutes, we have a six forty-five and a seven P. M. appointment. The minutes are being moved the next meeting, so they're not on the agenda today. And so three point one, planning board administrator updates and reports.
Okay, so the applications, and I'm gonna call it pre-filing applications. Twenty-seven Scale Lane, the request for certificate of completion for stormwater management permit twenty nineteen dash oh-three. A letter was sent to thirty-two Yoki Trust after the January eighth planning board meeting, outlining action items the board recommends prior to issuing to the final certificate. Two forty-nine, two fifty-one Main Street is an application for a use permit which is under the care of the building department. The applicant proposes opening a UPS store next to Honeyland Farms convenience store in the same building, but a separate business. This is a change in use requiring the applicant to provide more than five new parking spaces and subsequently a site plan review special permit. The applicant tonight is requesting a waiver from the requirement that site plans be prepared by a certified professional engineer. And that's your appointment at seven forty-five. Enter departmental approvals for eighty-nine C. Um, additions of buildings, ramps and stairs, stormwater management, and electric system installation. Building permit approval is pending and determination letter has been drafted for site business and compliance. Let's see, sixty-six Bay Area Hill Road, um, the permit, it's a stormwater management permit, it's inactive at this time. Ninety-eight to one hundred West Meadow Road, earth conserving activity was noted and a letter was sent to the owner, we're still waiting. Twenty-two Main Street, you will hopefully, at your second appointment, speak with the owner. With a project modification noted, the owner's been notified as a required action. We have letters sent from Land Use and from the building department. The owner has provided a response to that letter to address to the planning board. Twenty-two, West Meadow Road, West Brook Shore, Borey, earth conserving activity and tree removal was approved on a perimeter. The owner's been notified and we have received information and it's still under review. Point-five Harbor Trace, uh, everybody's kind of monthly reports for, uh, for twenty-five Harbor Trace, Campbell Farm, Two Wheeler, and Ten Type Road, all stormwater permits are to be. So for one oh-eight, one-ten, one-twelve, West Meadow Road, uh, stormwater permit application materials are being compiled and the applicant is expected to submit an interim winter stabilization plan soon until the stormwater permit is issued. So that's an interim, like kind of a.
Yeah, two thousand and plus, right?
That's, yes, exactly. Yes, um. She's going to go to the.
Hold on.
Thank you. Hold on. Yeah, between the, yeah, same room. So that's, that's clean since there's not a lot during the, long during the winter, so. Misleading us. Um, I sent you guys an email. We did receive the concept from the intersection study that, uh, for Route one nineteen and Route thirteen from MRPC, they are still available. Um, you know, send me any comments you might have. MRPC is gonna be formulating the final report. District local technical assistance call for proposals are open. The first round is due March third. Unified planning work program, call for projects. They are also open and due February ninth. The project planning meeting is scheduled if you want information as well. The annual plan election, again, will be held April twenty-second. Nomination papers are now available through March first. And they must be returned by March fourth. There's a five-year position and a three-year position open for the planning board. Effects training, all board members, again, master training, supervision. Um, with regards to the changes the board's been working on, um, with the definitive subdivision, um, a, I'm working on the legal notice for the public hearing and I'm, you know, gonna verify reviews probably at some point regarding the date of that hearing. So, um, I have an appointment on the thirtieth with town council to submit the scenic road depth and the ground mounted solar by law changes that board put forth, um, back on November, the end of November meeting. So I attended two seminars, which I highly recommend. One of them was adopting and revising rules and regulations of boards. The second one was the HGO training on zoning by law amendment processes and by law filing. Both of them are excellent. And I do have the, um, handouts in your folders for those. MBTA communities update, a updated revision of the draft, uh, multi-family overlay district bylaw is in your reading packet for your review. Town administrator office hours are Tuesday, February sixth, from four to five P. M. If you have, uh, interest. And a little update on the shuttle bus, um, since ownership was low, there have been discussions regarding how to, to help revitalize the use, um, or get the use started. And they're talking about potential change of rest stop locations to possibly the library, senior center. You know, so more, more of a central place there and then adjustment of schedules.
Thank you, Beth. No questions from the board? Okay. Announcements and communications.
Sure. I've got one. Yep. Uh, the town of Shirley zoning board of appeals. The town, this was received on the, this year. The town of Shirley zoning board of appeals will conduct a public hearing at seven P. M. on Monday, February fifth at the town office building. Application was submitted by Brandon McCab, Apple Valley Homes LLC, Three Old Farm Lane, Pepperell. A public hearing for variance per section four point thirteen point four, C-one of the protective zoning bylaws related to permitted uses zone two. Residential development on a minimum lot size of eighty thousand square feet per unit, provided that no more than twenty-five percent of the lot may be covered with impervious surfaces. The parcel is located at zero Great Road, Shirley. And you can get a copy from the town clerk.
Thank you, Andrew. Three point three, proposed changes to planning board regulations, one seventy-five dash forty-five stormwater. I don't know if they have copies. Um, I do.
I didn't think that they had come six pages long, so I didn't print them out. Um, but I can, I think I can.
No, it's more than that. It's like eleven.
Yeah.
Anyway.
It's pretty long.
So, um, what I, what I'd like you to do is go to the, and I didn't, I printed this one off first and then I saw that there was the second one on the portal and it was, um, it had edits on it.
Oh, definitive subdivision?
Some of them stormwater, that is.
The only other regulations are, um, one seventy-five thirteen definitive subdivision regulation, review.
Was that something that we, I don't know, it's not cooperating right now. It's swollen. Um. So it looks like, um. Are these the edits that we made? Okay. Okay. And are there further edits?
Welcome. We'll be with you in a moment.
Yeah, no problem. At the bottom of the page, it's in red and unfortunately, what I had didn't print out any colors, so, um. So this is, this is what we already did and the highlight has been approved by town council. And you're getting ready to be opposed for public hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So just review those when you have a chance. They'll, it'll be, we'll have it for the public hearing. And when we have the public hearing, can we have an edited form that's red?
Yeah.
That shows it right off what we're looking at?
Yeah, I think.
Okay. Or highlighted?
Okay.
Kind of thing. Okay. Okay, so this is a, let me see, here my time is a bit. This isn't a public hearing, so I can, um, I can crawl up beforehand, right? Okay. Um, hi, if you'd like to come to the table, we have you at six forty-five. It's a couple minutes earlier, but since it's not a public hearing, we can go ahead and hear what you have to say.
Okay.
Okay. This is on the.
So, can I explain?
Okay.
Please. So before, uh, we bought the store two thousand thirteen, there is a two fifty-one and two forty-nine, both units different. And two forty-nine over here, there is a costume rent store. And then, uh, yeah, it is, uh, it was empty, so we thought let's do a whole wall and, uh, you need, uh, just we do Honeyland Farm and these two fifty-one and two forty-nine combined.
Okay.
But right now is grocery store is very, uh, we are not making too much money and lot of items expire and it's tough to earn money, so we thought let's open the UPS store over here. So, and, uh, here, uh, over here, there is eight party and one is a handicap. So.
Is that what we have now?
Yes, right now, uh, this is my site plan and I discussed with engineer, civil engineer and they've quoted me like eight to nine thousand dollars for, only for a site plan. So I decided just make myself a site plan and I submit to you.
Okay.
So this is for, uh.
The change of use, there needs to be a certain number of parking added, is that right? Did I read that somewhere?
Yeah. Someone already read that there's five parking spaces added and I'm not sure.
Oh, yeah, of a change of use.
It has to go by the, by, by law. Can you explain that, Beth?
Yeah.
Regarding the increase, when there's a change of use, the increase in the parking spaces.
Yeah, but you, we, remember we did.
Yes, uh, we had some parking o- over here in Brookline, not near the common. There is a lot of parking space available and most of customer park or common parking lot and they just crossed the road and came my store. So we have eight parking plus over here, next to common, there is a parking.
So the common parking?
Yeah, common parking. You know, it's just one side, front of my store, there is a common parking, there's a parking, lot of parking space available.
So if you need to file for, it's like coming to view special permit application, um, there is no.
There's no application yet, right now.
Oh, so this is just for understanding.
Yeah, so that's, so that's clear. There is no application yet, but she's coming to forward you to ask for the waiver for the, of an engineer, registered professional engineer.
The other thing that comes to mind is this traffic study. Regarding the addition, UPS is busier than a costume store or.
Oh, sure.
A Keno place or, you know, stuff like that. So, um, and you're right downtown. On a small lot, so that's probably something.
Be valuable.
To look at.
I love the idea.
That comes to mind. How about you guys?
Yeah, 'cause that's, that study doesn't, I know what she's talking about, 'cause I park there all the time on this side. The, the always parking spaces up against the common.
Yeah. Um, so my, a lot of customer park, uh, car, their car just common over here and they just walked at my store.
And who owns, is that town parking technically?
Across the street with me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's public.
Yeah.
It is the public parking, yeah.
I don't know how the by law affects the actual parking for her, change of use then, because you can't really count it.
Right.
You can't really count the, the public parking, the townhome parking. Yeah.
I'm not particularly, I get technically, I don't, I guess I don't mind. I mean, there's not much you can fit on that area.
No, there isn't.
You know, so even though technically you probably can't count it, the reality is that.
It's, it's available.
It's actively used.
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily opposed to presumption of using it.
No, not either. I'm, though you're right.
Well, a lot of people use it. I mean, the church.
Sure, sure.
Funeral home.
Sure.
Gets.
What would be the, you know what the hours of the store would be?
This is not too much. Our, uh, um, maybe nine to five. This UPS store, nine to five, not too long, like, not like Honeyland Farm.
Yeah.
This is just nine to five, yeah. And Saturday, Sunday, nine to two or nine to three, that's all. And this, uh, this Honeyland Farm, who is coming, just they are, uh, staying like two or three minutes, take, uh, ticket and just go away. And right now it's very tough business for them, so.
Well, I, um. The by law would reflect the different types of use here. I assume that it's all zone commercial now.
Well, it's downtown commercial.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
That whole area.
It's also in the historic district, so I think if you read the letter, if you look back on.
Yeah, that's the.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
So.
Does she have to go there too? She has to go there too? The store coming.
So, so the, uh, current building is in operation and is a single use now, which I assume is retail. Is that, you have a retail license there now?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
And the UPS store, I would, because it's a store, I would assume that would still be retail. So if that's the case, um, the different kinds of use puts different demands on the parking. But the use is still retail, so the question would be, I, I don't think it's a change of use, so I don't know why you would need a special permit, is my question.
We are not changing from outside anything. Just stay, just stay, just like that.
Right, so.
Yeah, we don't change anything.
I'm saying it's zone for retail now and the current establishment was approved whenever it was approved, or the requirements at that time. So the question would be now, A, is it a change of use? I don't see where it is. Which means that there wouldn't be a special permit required. If she goes for a change of use, then the board's compelled to look at the parking requirements for the different uses. So what I'm trying to suggest here is, I think if we considered it an existing by, um, right already, in other words, it was pre-approved by some board at some point and at the time it met the requirements of the zoning board at that time, um, if she doesn't change the use, then there should be no change. It's just a building permit application. So that's, uh, Beth, I don't see why this would be a change of use and need a special permit.
That's what the determination was. Um, Jessica's on, you can ask her. She made the determination, uh, based on the by law that it would require more parking.
If there's a change of use.
There's an increase in intensity of use. It's a duplicative, it's by square foot of the UPS store. You're proposing going from a vacant store to a, with a business, so you have so many square feet of floor space.
Right.
In the by law, that generates the parking.
So it doesn't meet the by law now, the current by law?
Yeah. It, it's like plan review.
It's triggered.
Yeah, and the parking requirement.
The intensity is triggered. The, the change of, it's, it is a change of use per se.
Right.
Because the traffic isn't gonna be the same, so.
Vacant and it's being used, yeah. It goes from being vacant to being a business. So that's the increase in intensity. It's also a change of use, 'cause right now it's not being used.
But yet all, uh, at times, all the spots have been used. All the, all the parking spots have been used.
Right.
You know, at, at, at one time, you did have, I mean, not right, I'm not saying right now, but I think what he's saying is, okay, even as the grocery store and, um, the other side, you had Keno at one time, maybe?
Yeah, it like nice Keno, yeah.
Yeah.
Keno, yeah.
There were, it was used, all, all of it was used. So now you're going to, and, and that's why I say traffic study, because then it brings into, um, it, it probably would be used, you know, 'cause there's no place around here to go pop up UPS.
The closest one is in close.
Yeah.
No!
I know. I'd love to have that.
Before, it was the over here business. Before, uh, costume, uh.
Yeah, but, you know, I remember that too. So it's like two or three, you know, it was mostly around Halloween. You know, that was the busiest, uh, time and then Santa stuff. So, uh, last quarter of the year.
I could only imagine, and I would hope that it would be very busy.
Yes, right.
And I expect I would, you know, we come across moments where we need a UPS store and it's always a pain to drive the half hour, or you just choose not to go UPS because it's too far away.
Right.
Let's, uh, let's, uh, let's discuss this in overtime and see if we can, um, find a way to look at this. The proposed new use for that portion of the store. In other words, when you have retail, you need so many places for the occupants of the store and then for the client base coming to the store. In other words, in the by law, it says so many parking plus for two for employees or whatever. So that's standard, okay? The, the question is when it was a dry cleaners or whatever, are we?
Costume store.
I'm sorry?
Costume store.
A costume?
A costume.
Oh, really?
You rented costume, bought or you rented costumes?
Yes, the costumes, yeah.
So the question is, what occupancy would require, what, what the parking space requirement be for the different occupancies? I mean, I think in our by, zoning by law, it just talks about retail. So whether it's one store or two, w- wouldn't appear to matter. It's the size of the building and the use. So it's all commercial use based on the sizes there. So the question at bay is, so I don't see a change of use is my point. It's still retail.
Jessica? Are, can you, are you hearing us?
I'm here, yes. Sorry, I'm on two different meetings.
Did you wanna, did you wanna speak to this, did you wanna speak to the, um, Honeyland issue in the UPS store? As far as the determination that there was a change of use? There's, there's discussion here that perhaps it's not a change of use. She's trying to join us two ways, but we're not getting any.
Yeah.
We're not hearing you, Jessica.
Oops, hold on.
Now I hear you.
Am I there, am I here now?
Yeah, I can hear you. We can't see you, but I can hear you.
Okay. Oh, my gosh, I am having some internet problems tonight.
We can slow, yeah.
So, okay. All right, let's try to. Can Jessica Consalvo have screen sharing permissions, please?
Charlie, did you hear that?
Yes, I heard her. I'm, uh, I'm getting to that right now. Hold on, please.
Thank you.
Okay, she should have it now.
All right.
So, we need to, a little bit over the seven.
All right, so I have, um, the site plan by law up on the right side and then the parking up on the left. So we have site plan review special permit, E applicability, any change of use or increase in intensity of use, which went under the.
Robert's question feels like there is not a change of use because it continues to be retail.
Well, it does say increase in intensity.
Increase in intensity, right.
And so go to the parking requirements and it says five spaces, I'm sorry, one space for under eighty square feet sales floor area, but not fewer than five spaces per separate enterprise. Which triggers site plan review, special permit by the planning board.
Okay. Because it's a separated boss.
So there is, um, main street parking from here to here, uh, I think one hundred eighty-four feet. From here to over here, Brookline parking. So this from here to one eighty-four, era, yeah, one eighty-four, uh, feet far. So we need, uh, less than three hundred feet, we need more parking, right?
I think so. You calculated that you need eight spaces more than what you have.
Eight more?
Yes, and so. Yes, and so in the bylaw, it does say that the planning board can use its discretion in working with you to determine what's usable within the site.
So I need eight or more parkings?
Yeah, eight or nine places.
Eight or more.
Square footage of the, the business.
So I have eight, right?
You have eight, but that's for your other routine.
Yeah, that would be additional.
Right.
That would be additional, even though that's a smaller space. And I think there's going to be more that comes into play as far as the, the traffic study on UPS usage. So why, why don't we think about this?
Yeah.
Because we're just seeing this for the first time today. And then everybody has a copy of the site plan review checklist. So we'll, we'll put this on our next agenda for discussion. I won't be here in person.
I have a couple of questions on this first. Can you explain the colors, the gray is parking? What's the green?
Green, there is just land. Not, that's not my land, another, another building, so that's not.
So the green's not parking?
No, no, no.
Okay. All right.
So over here, there is the road, backside, behind the building. This is road. A road, yeah.
Road, okay.
Is this a dumpster, waste pit?
Yeah, this is dumpster.
So a road for your?
Yes, yeah.
Picked up the dumpster?
Yeah, and we can park also, probably for.
So where would the trucks take the, where would the trucks for the UPS store gonna load and unload?
Uh, over here, there is a back, back door. See this one? This is back door.
Okay.
Just curious, how many do you park, can you park when you do on the side or in the back?
Over here, we can park two cars. Yeah.
And then over here?
Uh, no, over here, there is an entrance, so we can.
Oh.
Yeah, so just, just, we can park just reverse.
And I think the dumpster right now is at the corner of the building, isn't it?
Sure.
Yeah, so over here, yeah, we can park.
Have it cleared out on your trash day.
We can park two car over here, and just reverse, and just.
But now when trash is being picked up?
Every Tuesday.
Okay, but so then you wouldn't have a car parked there because the trash?
Generally, if we do, we park the car, so waste management, they call me, and we just reverse the car.
Okay.
Yeah, always, I, I, he called me, whenever he came, yeah, he called.
So if the UPS truck is gonna load in the back there, do they have room to get around a dumpster?
Yes, yeah. There is room, yeah.
So how does that work? I mean, is it, is UPS like a, it's pickup and delivery?
I, I don't know exactly how it would work in this situation or with UPS, but I know I've seen like the, the regular UPS, big but not huge trucks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They just may even back up to the front door.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just like a coke delivery.
Yes, that's.
So they need parking in the front, obviously, and there's a door in the back?
Yeah, there is a door, yeah, there is over here.
Probably park either.
I had two doors, see, over here, over here, but for UPS over here, this is the car.
And from Brookline?
Yeah, he.
The truck couldn't go in through the door?
I think the big unknown would be intensity, you know, and how you'd hope it's busy. If it's busy, he'd have more stuff to grab.
But this is small UPS store, not big, like, you know, this is only 1100 square foot. 11 or 13 hundred square, not, not big store.
So are you gonna be running the store?
Yes. And this is my first time, I'm doing myself, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So they, so they really would have access to the whole store?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, we have access.
And there's no more cars gonna be, because there's no more employees?
I mean, I know it doesn't meet the requirements here, but in reality, I don't see a high traffic there, you know?
No, this Honeyland farm is very quiet, very quiet. If you can see in the morning, it's quiet, after six o'clock, very quiet. Nowadays, it's very tough to do business, very tough.
No argument there.
I, personally, I don't see, A, there's no way they can get eight more cars here. And B, I don't really see, if that was all the convenience store now, I don't think the amount of traffic, no matter which one they were going to, is gonna really be, have a big impact, in my mind.
I don't know, calculation wise, if, I know the existing wall would just seemingly need to be patched there, but if you take a little more space away from Honeyland, if it's not as busy, does that change the math for?
Wow.
I guess, if you lose spaces here, can you put spaces there?
Oh.
I don't know what that.
Oh, I see, just saying, so if you make the, 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 what if you do store smaller?
But, uh, I have a wall over here, I cannot put walls from. Over here is coolers, over here is all coolers.
Oh, no.
Yeah, so I cannot put walls.
So what, I didn't hear that.
Uh, they're coolers.
Yeah.
All coolers.
Yes.
Temperatures.
How do we get traffic study?
The same way, the same way you would appear you, you would ask for a 53G account, I would get some quotes from traffic engineers, present those quotes, and then you would, similar to a theory of your premise.
Okay.
I'm, I'm just throwing things out to consider here. Instead of calling it a separate business, it's an extended retail. In other words, if you take a grocery store, and there's so many parking spaces for the grocery store, and that grocery store sets up a wine shop within the store, it's all under the same business, and the square footage of the whole store hasn't changed at all. Right, so I think it's a matter of how this is being presented, that's more of the question than, I don't know, but I think if that were, if it was the honey farm store with a UPS service center, is a big difference than two separate businesses.
I see what you're saying. I do think there's a notable increase in intensity, which seems to be how the bylaw is written, but maybe sitting and thinking about it, and just reading through it a little bit will give us.
In other words, when you think of a commercial strip mall, that might have four units in it.
Sure, sure.
The planning is done, for some four separate buildings, they all have their own toilets, they all have their own utilities, okay?
I hear what you're saying, Robert. I think just, wanna be relatively consistent with what we have for the bylaw.
Right.
And how it's written, so.
And we have, we're ten minutes late for our second.
I'm sorry?
We're ten minutes late for our second.
Okay.
So we'll see you at our next meeting?
Okay, so, next meeting, when?
12th of February, I believe.
12th of February.
And we're gonna, we'll look more into it, think about it.
Okay. Okay.
We can't give you a decision right now.
Right, no, no problem.
Decide on how this is, if this can proceed, and then Beth can get back to you.
Actually, I, I had to pay UPS fee, so is it possible you can do a little bit early for this decision? You can do a little bit early.
Bar and bar ready?
No, 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 I had to pay for UPS store, but like, so if you give me this decision a little bit early, then I can process with UPS store, UPS franchise. If you give me this is a little bit early, yes or no? 12th of February.
I don't think we can do that right now.
Uh, you can do next week, or?
Well, that, we can only do it at a meeting.
Uh huh.
And our next meeting is?
February 12?
12th.
Oh, so I have to wait and wait, right? You can, you cannot do a little bit early, right?
No, so, I don't think so, but, that is your discussion, we heard it, pros and, and cons, and where are we gonna go from here, kind of thing?
Okay.
So if we can get some feedback from Jessica and Beth regarding this, then we can perhaps give you an agreed way to move forward.
Oh, okay, okay, no problem.
I mean, because I need, and we, it's not something that we wouldn't agree with having in town, and having it certainly in the center is awesome. And I'm sure all the businesses around there would like that, but it, it's not something that we can do like that, because it is going against.
Okay, no problem.
The bylaw, so.
Yeah, yeah, no problem.
Okay?
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You have a nice.
Thank you. Sally, thank you for your patience. About the server, regarding the modification.
I believe I will have to abstain on this matter again, due to working my boss and employer, working in 22 Main Street.
All right. He doesn't have to leave the room, does he? Okay.
Well, then I'll be back.
Okay, this is just discussion anyway, there isn't gonna be a vote, because, well, we have a forum, okay?
All right, I'll be back.
Okay, so I have drawn a plan of vestibule that's in question. It's just a rough picture, and it's what you see when you drive by.
I guess, Beth, can you clarify, I guess part of the issue is that this was not done per the permit, approved permit that was reported?
The approved site plan, this is the modifications to the site plan. It's not on the site plan.
Was there a reason why it wasn't done per the plan? That was brought before?
I'm, I don't know, because I'm pretty sure that when I spoke to Dillis, I said I was gonna put a little vestibule in the front. Probably, maybe, I thought it was gonna be smaller than it is.
Do we have copy of the original?
You want the original site plan?
The original site plan?
This is the original right here. So this is where we put it, the part in yellow is highlighted, it's 12 by 12.
Okay.
It extends out 10 feet beyond the front of the building.
It's already there.
Okay, did you say 10 by 10, or 10 by 12?
It's, the actual vestibule measure is 10 by 12, but it was put into an inset that you can see on the plan there. That is 12 feet wide.
So it's 12 feet. It's 10 feet out from the furthest point, but 12 feet out from the.
Okay. Got it, because I'm just looking at you now. So it's 10 by 10 more than what was on the plan? Um.
Isn't that where we had handicap parking?
No, that's not handicap parking.
No, but wasn't that, wasn't that gonna be where the ramp was gonna be? Yeah, there's a handicap spot, I bought it.
Right here.
There's the handicap parking spot right there.
Okay.
Um, so, this is the walkway, the.
The slope ramp.
Yes, one inch per foot.
Right.
So it was originally designed to come here, here, and then here, and then the switch back, to come here and go in.
To go in.
Yeah, so now, I think this is better. It comes here, here, and here. And here's the entrance right here. And on this side, there's steps that go up. And the, the walkway is four feet wide, the way it's supposed to be, it's compliant with ADA code. So this is a buffer zone, because the waiting room in here is kind of small, considering we have a lot of big dogs coming in, and then cats, and people. And it's a buffer zone, so the animals don't escape, hopefully. Also, there isn't really enough room to have these big, pirony dogs barking and carrying on and everything. So it's just like a safety measure. And I think it adds to the, the looks of the building in the form.
I'm not the engineer, Robert, so why, why isn't the door right here, so that like you just, you don't have to do this?
Like the ramp could go like right up that way.
Because the ramp had to go around in the beginning to even get there.
Oh, it can't just go up like that?
Right, in other words, because of the slope and the grade, it has to stop, see this here, that's a five foot square.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
All right, that's a turning point, so that doesn't count. Right?
Okay.
So it goes from here to here, to a landing. All right? And then it goes up again to go back and around to get to the floor inside. So coming out this distance, she's gonna even need more ramp. All the square foot extra has to be added now to give her the room.
Well, we've measured it, and at one inch per foot, starting here, we can come here, 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 and go into the entrance right there.
Well, I'm not challenging your dimensions here, but these things require precision, so. So what I'm trying to suggest right now is, the original design needed this ramp here.
Did Stan do this? Did Stan add this on here? Did the engineer add this?
This is what the engineer did. So. If you, okay?
I see, yeah.
He's got a slope walk, a level area, a slope ramp, a level area, sloping up again, okay? And then up again, around in here, to get from the grade to the finished floor.
Okay.
So this would all, this little rectangle right here, would be the actual. So this would all, this little rectangle right here would be the actual increase that would happen uh, at the full height. So, now she wants to come out here.
I'm gonna enter.
Which means all of this would have to come way out here somehow.
Yeah.
But you've gotta add all these up.
Yeah.
And so, I'm not challenging what she's saying that it works, uh, but these things require pretty sensitive
Yeah.
drawings to know what you need, um. So.
So where do we go from here?
Well, um, she goes, you know, again, have to be provided with the Architectural Access Board, which is Robert's point. So there are some things that spring forward, not per view of, but.
There you have their.
Something here, something.
So we went by their code?
I'm sorry, you did this in the beginning when you first started this project with your own sketches, okay? And they weren't adequate, I, that's why we had to compel you to get these engineering stuff. I'm not doing this again, okay? So, this is what you want, show this board it's going to work. That's all we're asking for, nobody's giving you a hard time, but I, we can't rely on non-professional people doing this stuff. And you, as a business owner, don't want the liability for that either. So, I'm sorry, but these are freehand sketches, and, uh, you know, from inexperienced people. So, take this to a professional. Have him draw up what needs to be built, you're gonna need it anyway for your building permit.
So the other, the 39 feet that Phil Cattigan measured?
Yeah.
From the end of what would be the new plan to the street is 39 feet, and that, and it's not 50 feet setback?
It does not, and it does not infringe on the front yard setback. That was determined by the ZDA, so she doesn't need a variance again for the vestibule. It's out of the setback.
What is the setback?
30.
There are a couple other things in the special permit beside that, that have to be discussed too, I think that they're in the letter. One of them is the Mass DOT permit.
Like, I remember paying the fee for the DOT permit months ago, and we got a letter notarized, and I thought that was it, so we called them to get the, um, permit the other day. And they sent me this, they said, um, I guess they had gone through Dillis and nothing was ever done, this is dated October 26th of last year. So they want me to move the entryway a little bit east, which is fine with me. Taking into consideration the turning radius, so the turning radius is this here on the east side. If I move the, um, entryway over, the turning radius, radius on this side will have to be about the same as this one. So, that has to be figured out. And.
That's what I suspected. Mass Highway. That's why we put a stipulation, we needed their approval.
Well, that was an option to move it, and they said if I didn't want to, I could keep it here.
No, what you had presented with the surveyor, and he was here. And I questioned the distance between these driveways with Mass Highway. And so we compelled them to communicate with them and get the review. And as of this date, we never got a review from Mass Highway. And so, work has been done on the site, even though it was subject to their acceptance and approval. So, right now, obviously, they did not accept it, because they're asking to be changed. And that's one of, is one of my concerns, that Mass Highway would approve it, because it's a state highway.
Well, they gave me two options here, so I can take one of them.
Okay, so. Doctor, I'm not trying to be obstructive here, okay, I'm really. I know you're frustrated, and so is this board.
Yeah.
So, what I suggest here.
But the letter itself, um, I don't.
You're going to need, if you want the vestibule, and I understand the need for it, and I think it makes a lot of sense for your business, okay? So, we need, it's all looked at, so it all works, okay? The ramp, the vestibule, and the driveway. So if we get that all in one package, then you'll know what to build, we'll have, we'll know what we're approving, and it won't take as long to get this resolved, okay?
Okay, uh, but finding an engineer and getting it done, last time it took months and months and months, and $15,000.
Well, you have already paid an engineer to do a lot here, so these are modifications to a drawing. So you're not gonna be paying another firm to start all over. There's already a lot of site information here, this is a digital file. What you do need is a design for that vestibule area and the ramp to show that the slopes will work, okay? Um, so that ramp is gonna tell you how much land you need. So, you may be in a situation where you have to trade off something or other. Maybe it's only gonna be eight feet or whatever, but until you play that analysis, we won't know, okay?
So there's another thing too, um, the upstairs of this building was finished. A bunch of the floor had to be torn up with the electrical, new electric stuff in. So, uh, my carpenter's been, replaced the floor, and, um, did a few other things, took out old crummy wallboard, and it wasn't very well insulated. Now, I think I need a, a separate building permit for that.
Um.
Or do I? I was told by Dana Barnes.
You got a permit in the beginning, correct?
Yeah.
Well, typically, um, typically you can modify an existing permit without getting a new one?
Yeah.
And that's up to the building commissioner, okay?
I think he wants a separate permit for that.
Um.
Permit for the framing, permit for the insulation, and a permit for, or not permit, but inspection.
Here, here's.
For the wallboard.
I'm not trying to tell the building official how to, he wants to run things. Um, so it depends on how you approach him, alright? If this is a modification to an existing permit, maybe he can consider that, okay, and avoid all new permitting process.
Mm-hmm.
I would suggest that you get on top of that very quickly, because there's a new building code coming out in July, and you don't wanna deal with that one. Okay?
Okay.
Alright.
When you changes end up being a certain percentage over the original? It's like doing a whole new thing. And I don't know what it is.
Yeah, so.
35% or something, if you're making changes to the interior, which is why you have to have the permit.
From what you're telling me, some of these are repairs and not changes.
Yeah.
Well, that's a different story, okay?
That's what I thought, okay. And then, there's a, a couple of other things that the interim building commissioner, um, pointed out. He's under the impression that, uh, the Board of Health told him that we never had Title V or something. I, it's had several Title V's. Um, in fact, I went down to the Nishoba Board of Health, and I got the copies of, of all this stuff that was done in 20, uh, 2021.
Right.
Uh, but he's, uh, trying to impose fines because there wasn't one since 2013, which is not true. And then, the new septic system was put in, and.
Well, I know they have a new septic system, and the Board of Health approved it.
Yes.
Well. I, I, this board can't help you with that, but.
Well, there's a bunch of things in here that just aren't, are not appropriate, I think.
Um, well, um, that, that needs further review from someone else, we can't.
Yeah, that's.
Do that, but, um.
Okay, so I will find an engineer to modify this plan.
So I, I would, I would.
And then Mass got approval.
This one on condition. So, the. Modification, application to the plan was.
It's a very challenging project, I know.
Well, I mean, it, it's right on here, the site plan decision, that any material deviation shall require review by an approval of the board, i.e. through an amendment of the within approval or new site plan special permit as appropriate. And it's a, it's a deviation, and it's right in your permit.
It's, what is the deviation?
Your, the porch, or your entryway is a deviation from the permit that was approved.
Alright, so.
But this is the site plan for parking in the driveway?
No, it's a site plan for the special permit that describes all those topics.
Right.
The curb cut, sidewalks, parking, septic, drainage, okay? That's what you paid all that money for.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's, it's the whole package, you're telling the town everything you're doing.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what, that's what we have to compel you to. So now, there's a modification. Two, one, a personal request to mo- modify the physical building. And then, feedback from Mass Highway about the curb cut here and where it can be located.
Yes.
Alright, so that, this has to be updated, okay?
Mm-hmm.
For this board and the building department to approve it.
So you, uh, so modify or get a completely new?
Well, it'll be another drawing, but the, the engineer's already figured out everything in the back, so he's gotta, you gotta tell him what you wanna do here.
Mm-hmm.
And have him design the ramp to make it work.
Mm-hmm.
And then change the site plan, that comes from this guy, from the surveyor, okay?
Yes.
Now, the other guy is whoever's drawing the plans for your addition, okay? So, the two of them have to talk to one another to make sure you're getting the design you want with what's gonna be required for the site plan, okay?
Okay.
Alright, it's a two method.
You scared me when you said I needed a whole new site.
No.
Well, no, it's the same, no, no, you're, you're not gonna have to go through all that, again, these are, these are changes to a site plan. That's what you're gonna have.
Okay, right, yeah.
Alright.
So the next process is, um, we need an application for plan modification, and Beth can help you do that.
Okay.
Oh, here you go.
Yeah, and so it's modification.
Plan modification.
And then it got the time that looks like the other ones.
It's a $200 application for that.
Okay, so just go by what's in here. Alrighty.
Okay, Doug?
Do you want to, uh, share with us the, you, you mentioned an October letter from, um, Mass glad?
Yeah.
The last one we have, that is from, uh, Mr. Dillis in August.
So I thought I had the permit, since I paid for it, and then we got it notarized and everything, um. That's what they gave me. This was a couple of days ago.
Who gave this to? This is dated, uh, October 26th?
Yes, um, I, the DOT gave it to me, they emailed it to us.
That's what we asked for, remember, yeah?
Yeah, but this is, this is what tell, this is what tells her, can, can you make a copy of that? And have the board have a copy so we can do that.
There's a plan where you look into that, into the, yeah, thank you. What was it? You have another plan you were looking at, I wasn't here, so you're, is this one, okay, thank you, I'll get that.
I'll take a copy as well. How to do all this and run the business? Yeah, cause all you're doing is paperwork, but.
Yeah, it's, um.
Uh, Jessica, if you're still on, did you have any thoughts, Ted?
Can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, good. I am still on, I'm trying to stay on, um. No, I, I, I think what you guys have mentioned is, is, you know, maybe a, a minor plan modification, um. I, I would, and, and I know it was mentioned already, but just be wary of what's under your purview versus what's under Board of Health and Building Commissioner, if there are any grievances with other board or staff decisions.
It's not ours. What are you holding?
Right.
Just initial it and sign it in as an exhibit during the hearing, you know, the session, so for the record.
Oh, how do I do that?
Those are the one, just put it in the corner, you know, your initials and.
Oh, my initials, yeah.
No, no, it's just, it's usually the clerk that does it, but it's.
Oh, it is not him?
Yeah, Exhibit A.
Exhibit A.
Yeah, just for the record, so we know what we're looking at, there's so many documents.
And today's date?
Yeah, the same thing.
And today's date, please.
Okay.
When today's, what, 21 January?
Uh, 22.
22, January.
Mm-hmm.
About 24.
The board, um, should probably talk about, uh, the construction schedule and, uh, vote on requesting, uh, the extension, or, uh, her request for extension, I think that's in the letter, right? I think he has.
Oh, yeah. Well, there can't be any further construction until there's a permit. As far as the construction schedule goes.
So, so the building permit that I have.
She has an existing building permit now.
And special permit, which is.
And a special permit, right, based on what was presented before, okay? So it's up to the building commissioner to determine if he'll allow her to modify the current permit, amend it with the changes that she's asking for.
Right here, alright, uh, read, uh, E.
Right, we can't.
This is her special permit.
The applicant, this is what's recorded.
Okay.
The applicant shall come. The applicant shall complete the project with adherence to the dates provided in the construction timeline fixed hereto as Exhibit K. In no event shall project completion occur any later than October fifteenth of twenty-one, under this date too. Twenty-three, should project completion not occur by that date, the within-site plan special permit shall expire, absent an extension by the board for good cause shown.
You haven't extended, right?
Yeah.
November, if I recall?
Did, did we extend it?
You're talking about the site plan?
It was October fifteenth because of the Mass Dot, we thought.
Right.
Not this.
But it was subject to approval for Mass Dot, which now needs, they want a modification too.
Right.
So that's something you can do now, I mean, just to keep the permit active. The planning board permit, you would extend the deadline for the construction timeline.
Oh, for the planning board purpose, yes, to give her an opportunity to make the modification. I don't have a problem with that.
What do you think is fair? June first. What do you think's fair?
Well, I would think her surveyor can do this pretty quickly.
That has to do with the permit, but the.
For the site plan permit.
Well, she's asking for a six months extension to a year.
I was close.
Six months to a year extension would cover them.
Well, you can't construct. You can't continue the construction.
And that's part of the problem. You already built something, and that's probably why the building department's all upset.
But she's, she's going to apply for a modification to this special permit, so we're going to amend this special permit. So just for the paperwork purposes, you want to extend this permit.
The planning board's special permit.
Exactly.
Not the building permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
She's requested that in the letter.
Or do you think six months?
Well, June thirtieth.
Right, June thirty.
Because nothing's going to happen. I mean, February, there's not going to be any curb cuts, there's not going to be, but the, the engineering should get done. And then as soon as you have that come in, we'll try to go to the next step.
Right.
And then figure out what you're going to do for Mass Dot so that that can be done in the spring, and you could be done.
Yeah, you, you know.
Yeah.
That June thirtieth is for us, right?
I'll take a motion. I need a formal motion to extend this special permit until June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I second the motion.
I need it first.
Okay, I'll make a motion to extend the special permit to thirty, June twenty twenty-four. So that's the site plan.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, and Mass Dot.
Yes.
Yeah, but doctor.
Everything.
Yeah. You really need to know the drawings for the building too. Now, it's already built, so somebody's going to measure that up and make the ramp work with what's built.
Right.
As well as what Mass Dot wants, okay?
Okay, and what about that? Is that, that's not part of the site plan? That's, that's a building permit.
You need both, okay?
Yeah.
You need both.
Because they're both part of your special permit.
But they will, that site plan will go to us as well as the building department, okay? So you need both, right? And that June thirtieth deadline is, you're trying to want, want to get ahead of that because of the building code, okay? All right.
I'd like to do it next week, but I don't see that happening.
So somebody's got to measure up what's built there, so the building department has real information on that.
Modification shouldn't take long for an engineer to do.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Take a vote on that, extension?
Yes, I'll have a little call vote, please, because I think we had further discussion.
Yes.
Okay.
Robert Therin, yes.
Carol Hopstus, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes.
And can I just verify the date, June thirtieth?
June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. That includes, you know, engineer plan and Mass Dot.
Update for Mass Dot.
Update for Mass Dot. You're going to have to, you're going to have to modify your plan to Mass Dot's specifications. So that should be done at the same time, because again, it's a modification.
Yes, yeah, I understand that. I'm just, the vestibule is part of the, the new modified plan. And once I get the new modified plan, I can get a building permit, right? And then finish the project.
Right.
Okay.
But just include Mass Dot.
Yes, yeah.
With that.
Oh, yeah.
Modification.
Yeah, we're on it.
Okay. I saw it.
I thought I had it, but I didn't.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sorry, we'll delay. Can you, sir?
Here, just to see. Oh, thanks. I'm sorry. No, I was just here, Robert, just to see. I'm, she's always going to go, I saw it, you know, she's. So just here for.
Well, we're trying.
No, and one thing I was going to ask is like, you know, the thing is, they have a rather wrong. I know you can't recommend an engineer for it, can you?
Well, I do this stuff, but I can't work, be on this and do your work either.
Oh, you're in the air?
This one, this one, I can't, no.
But, but there'd be a conflict.
No, I understand.
It was?
Oh, no, it wasn't, no, it wasn't. But when she filed for it.
No, I know we've been watching, we have a secretary.
First of all, she's just a surveyor. She's got position paid and all this money.
Yeah, but careful.
So this would be a change.
Okay.
But what's wrong there?
All right.
If somebody's going to measure up or steer on, I would be sure.
Yeah, no, I understand.
And then design your way.
All that work with what they do.
To give that.
So they're working together. I see.
Yeah.
All right, we're done.
He's enjoying the site and with Mass Department of Transportation changes.
Okay. So we just voted extension.
Does, um, do you have to sign in?
With Mass Dot.
Yes, could you please sign our little, um?
You were getting us, you were getting us copies of everything.
Oh, sure, yeah, oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I keep dropping everything, right? Wearing this mask.
Those copies that were initialed by Carol and signed into record?
Yeah.
Okay, you're giving us copies of those?
Yeah, they're going to go in the file that have come in. So middle, so before we vote that'd be used, so that's why I do that, yeah.
Okay, so could you give us copies now so that we can review your particular Mass Dot?
I can do that.
Thank you. Okay, so now we're at like ten of eight, and we have section one seventy-five. Yeah, the stormwater changed. Oh, we already went through that.
Yeah, all right, this is fine.
Okay, and then the other one?
Oh, yeah, that's right, you're supposed to give that in. This is for you, Laura, and she said that's fine.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yeah, it's okay.
I was really, I have a copy, so that's your copy.
Thank you.
But it's just too many words for me, you know, referencing certain things on the engineer plan, and that is not my thing.
Well, there's a lot of codes and stuff.
Yeah, so I, I, I just feel better that you think that it's okay.
Yeah.
Because all the decisions were made on, based on your discussion with Brett.
Right.
You know, so, okay. So I didn't print off anything else. TBA communications on, but maybe we'll talk about three point five. And then the MRPC, and then I think there's an adjournment.
When that comes to fruition, we're, I guess it's up to us, but we're only picking one district? Is that right? Is that a best question?
Yeah.
Because the total amount we're required of housing is lower than what?
I think by the law, we could have all three.
Sure.
We could make it as big as we want to make it.
The whole town, within reason, yeah.
But I think what was selected, and this was selected by the department heads too, were those three on Fitchburg Road.
Sure.
And why they're not including it all is beyond me, because I would, because you would have many opportunities open, unless, of course, you don't let many opportunities open, and you just want to keep it very closed. I don't know, that.
That's one of the reasons I asked, I asked we could have a.
Oh, here we are.
Non-public discussion.
All right. Andrew has a question.
Um, for three point five, the MBTA communities, when I read through the bylaws, something about it, when we get to the point of the board making a decision, being that the minimum required from the state is like a hundred and seventy-something, do we only need to pick one district?
Yeah.
Is that, they gave us like kind of an option?
Do you have to do that?
Oh, yeah, not pick all three.
Well, you could, yeah, I mean, that's, that's again, that's.
So it can be anything, you know, all eight.
But I, I recommend one, but I don't.
But when you say, when you say you all.
The townspeople are going to.
The townspeople are going to vote on it.
Right.
So when, when you say us, are we recommending?
Yeah.
As a planning board?
At the town meeting.
But the planning board won't make the recommendation, I don't, well, you will, yeah, you will eventually make the recommendation on, on the article, on the warrant article.
Right.
As to the decision on the districts that are going to be.
It's the town.
Um, I can't be sure. I really know yet.
I think.
Yeah, I can't be sure.
Well, I think what I think what happens is the planning board makes a recommendation to the town.
Yeah.
Whether it's one district, three districts, or whatever. And the related bylaws that would go with it, okay? So, and I'm, I think what's going to need here is more of a public awareness, because if we just, if they're not already aware of what's coming on, that town meeting is going to go on forever.
Yeah. I know we talked about at one point, doing an information session, but then choosing to wait, I believe.
Until before the meeting.
And it may be difficult for the board to make any one specific recommendation, because there, there are all these parameters here, you know what I mean? There's a lot of different alternatives and.
Yeah, I don't know how to present through the app, but.
I don't know that we have a lot of alternatives when everything is based on water and sewer, basically, in town, because there's certainly enough acreage.
That's why I'd like to have a.
All right, well, so, and then three point six MRPC announcements of the district local technical assistance grants and unified planning work program. Do you want to talk to that?
Yes, the district local technical assistance grant, I would have taken time to read through that if you would, and, and find out, you know, if you have any thoughts on what might be a good idea. That's on.
Is this the thirteen and one nineteen thing?
That was not part of a D L T A grant. D L T A grants is what helped with the MBTA communities to this point. We had two D L T A grants for any technical assistance that the board requires, you know, where the town, you know. So they were, they did the feasibility analysis as on the district, all the mapping, all that kind of stuff. We are not prepared to do in Land U, so any kind of technical work that is needed, this is the time to put together a proposal, a call for proposal. So just, if the board has thoughts and ideas and suggestions and that, it goes to the planning board, I'm sorry, goes to the board of selectmen for final approval.
When?
So the D L T A, I believe, the call for proposals is due March third. So there's some time.
Okay. Okay, so we have got another list to look at before the twelve for our next meeting.
As Land U coordinator, we'll be putting together some thoughts and ideas too. You know, so MBTA is going to be high on the, you know, on the list.
All right, so you'll have some feedback for us at the next meeting then?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And if you guys have thoughts and ideas, we'll let you know.
Okay, well, if we have nothing else before this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven fifty-seven P M.
Second.
It's a first and a second, all right. Roll call vote, please.
Robert Therin, yes.
Carol Hopstus, yes.
Andrew Shepherd, yes.
And Laura Schiffern, yes.